Everybody's mic is on. Cameras are on. Yes.
We're recording, we are streaming. Ms. Mathias, you may proceed with the public executive review session.
Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Review Session for Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty five. We will begin with the appeals calendar, continued hearing items, item number nineteen, twenty twenty four oh one eight, twenty eight forty eight, Farber Terrace, Queens.
Um. So we have received comments from Fire Department and also from DEP. Um, DEP had asked for some information regarding street widening line um to be shown on the plan because that would help them determine um the corridor sewer corridor. I think that is more that can be resolved as part of the DOB's amended drainage plan. But more importantly, what DEP uh stated was that um the permanent structures, including the stairs, and though they only refer to stairs, but that would also would have applied to the ramps and the driveway to be not located within the sewer corridor. Um, so based on that, the applicant has revised the plans and has also responded um to Fire Department comments. Um, so the revised plan seems to have addressed both DEP and Fire Department comments. We though don't have um uh no, um, DOT actually has no issues. It's Parks Department.
Sorry.
Uh, though I think based applicant states that um based on their discussion, parks seem to did not uh parks didn't have an issue, I think, but um we don't have anything confirming that. Only thing what I would say is that we do have a draft uh builder's pavement plan, which is based on um uh the, sorry, the draft builder's pavement plan, and that needs to be aligned with the revised plan. So the applicant uh should revise the draft builder's pavement plan before um, yeah, patient uh board decides on it. Those are my comments. Um Vice Chair, oh, did you announce?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I apologize. For the record, Vice Chair Chivetta and Commissioner Sheta will be joining us remotely. Thank you.
Um, Vice Chair Chivetta.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I have no further comments.
Um, Commissioner Artley Brown?
I have no comments.
Uh, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I saw that they responded to DEP comments. Hopefully, we can get this through soon and and the move forward. I have nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Yoon?
Thank you. I have no comment.
Okay.
Do you want me to pull the both next together?
Um, yeah, I think the issues are same.
Okay. Item number twenty 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 four forty three A forty two, Joann Court, Staten Island, and item number twenty one, twenty twenty four forty four A sixty two, Joann Court, Staten Island.
Okay, so the applicant has provided um survey of both the sites um showing the location of the existing fire hydrant, the width of the uh street. Um, also drainage plan um has been requested for the area and the applicant um states um that it is agreeable to conditions to amend the drainage plan if required post uh approval. Uh, so I just want to quickly go over the history. It maybe it wasn't clear to all of us, uh, and just for the record. Um, board had previously approved the GCL thirty five and thirty six, and uh the area is not fully built out, though private roads uh per approved GCL thirty six, um, they have been built, including uh Joann Court, and the tax map shows the private streets that are overlaid on top of the mapped but unbilled streets, which is what brings this application to us. Um, as the site survey and the site plan, um, both of those documents indicate that the that Joann Court and the um um Dischella and the other street, I'm forgetting the name, um, both uh all of these streets are built to the width of thirty four feet, measured from the existing granite block curbs with existing fire hydrants and uh eight inch uh water main um that exist um on the uh within the in the street bed. And the site plan uh shows a detailed width of the sidewalk from that thirty four width. It it includes a four foot wide uh walkway plus a three foot wide uh planting bed um that is abutting the granite curb. So I think that I'm stating that more uh for a question that was raised by Fire Department. The curb to curb width of these streets are thirty four foot wide. Um. So, um. I just kind of um what we have is we have a letter from DEP and uh stating that there are no capital improvement plans uh in the area. Uh, DOT uh is not needed. As for prior two thousand grant, DOT had issued no objection, and the private roads were approved, and they are, as I stated, are on the tax map. Um, and there are other buildings that have been built um along these private roads. Um, so this is a waiver only to remove the map portion of the street, which has never been built. And uh, I think um the Fire Department's, um, I don't know what the status of the Fire Department is. We have had some back and forth.
Sure, we we sent the Fire Department, and the Fire Department modified their letter to uh only be a recommendation to the board. Yeah, as opposed to a requirement of the application.
Okay, yeah, and I believe uh um Deputy Chief uh Bellas is here, so he can also speak to his as so has modified their statement to a recommendation. All right, um, Vice Chair Chivetta?
Well, thank you, Chair. I have nothing further.
Um, Commissioner Artley Brown?
I have no question.
Um, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I just have a request for clarification from them. They said that DEP requested a drainage plan, and then they said they are agreeable to, like you mentioned, Chair. They said they are agreeable to a condition uh that if if a grant is made requiring a drainage plan be amended, then they can do that, and further elaborated that the project engineer estimates the modification of a drainage plan will will require eighteen to like twenty four months. I'm not sure if they mean like to submit and get approvals or just the preparation of the amended drainage plan. My my understanding is that like the engineering effort itself shouldn't take even a fraction of that. So I I just wanted them to clarify. Thank you.
I think for me, the statement was more like it's everything is there in place, but if uh if uh an amendment is required, they will proceed, but maybe the applicant should clarify that at the hearing.
Thank you. Nothing further.
Yeah, we would the condition would be prior to CO or?
I I for me, for me, the first question is why do you even need an amended drainage plan?
Because most of it's built.
Most of it is built, so if that clarification would be helpful, and if so, uh, if it is at all needed, when would that get triggered and how long therefore it will take? Those are the three questions.
So if if it was built, was it built based on like an approval from DEP, prior approval or so?
Um, I cannot speak to that, but that is the standard procedure of uh uh that has been the standard procedure of throughout for any development uh that is built in the city, and that is my understanding, so I'm assuming it would apply.
This is the protocol, yes.
Uh, Commissioner Yoon?
Thank you. I had no comments.
Yeah. Item number twenty two, twenty twenty two ninety five B C twelve forty nine Sutter Avenue, Brooklyn.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. All right. Oh, we are going into the zoning calendar.
I'm sorry.
Right, right.
Zoning calendar, continue hearing items.
That's why I was like, you don't have an appeal case. That's why. Okay, sorry, my bad. Um, so after much back and forth, applicant has provided updates um of uh updated photos of of the site improvements that's been made to uh to this area. Um, they have listened to a community concern that was raised and have enclosed the rear rear yard um to address a safety concern. Uh, photos of street tree plant, street tree planting beds have been provided along Sutter and Dosher. Uh, however, they um are awaiting parks um processing, and they believe it would take about twelve to um twenty four months to complete that processing. And um, so the applicant states that the car washing waiting area lines have been restriped, and the parking area has been painted to improve visibility. I have to say, based on these photos, I'm not sure that the photos provided are latest. If so, um the la the striping for the car wash area was not very pronounced, uh, so maybe we got older set of photos. Uh, however, I think, given the active nature of operation on this site, I am pretty sure however much you restripe it, um, these are going to fade. So strongly recommend that the operator um regularly um restripes um these lines to make sure that the queuing and the designated spaces for each of these individual operations of occurring on this site are ha are happening, um, and there's a clear direction and um a area allocated for each one of these operations. So I would say this has been going on for nearly two and a half years, and um I feel that we are at this point where I can confidently close, knowing that the project will operate to the best possible extent we have tried to uh bring it to. Um, though, as I said, uh, site owner and the operator, they need to be extremely vigilant in maintaining the site. And I think too, in all these years, they've been cooperating and wanting to improve, but I hope that improvement and willingness to keep this site safe and clear and operational uh operationally functioning in the way that we have been reviewing it um is maintained throughout. Um, so those are my recommendations, and uh Vice Chair Chivetta.
Vice Chair Chivetta?
Thank you, Chair. Nothing further on this.
Uh, Commissioner Artley Brown?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I I just have one thing that permanent dividers. Uh, are we okay with eliminating them, not installing?
Yeah, because I think we did hear concerns, and this is not the only car wash. Others have also indicated that it becomes uh of a, it's somewhat of a liability and a risk issue because it may create um vehicles hitting it and damaging, and sometimes they they don't work, so uh the the few hearings ago, we all kind of agreed that uh that we should um do a common um to process the queuing for the car washing area.
Okay.
Um, Commissioner Yoon?
Um, I had the same question as Commissioner Sheta, but um they did paint it, so that's that's one thing. Um, they also seemed to have brought back the car wash banners along the property line, and I think previously we'd had them remove the excess banners, so um, we appreciate it if you could send an updated photo. Those banners gone because you're still uh an open case here, so at least for right now. Please remove the excess banners.
Um, interesting. I didn't, I missed that one. Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And I think I think I'm just gonna share it so we're all looking at the same, because it's in the recent submission.
Just give me, yeah, I'm waiting.
These flags, they had had a bunch of them, you know, on both sides before they installed the fences, and uh we had had them remove them all, so they should be gone.
Yes, they should be gone. All right, um. Yes.
Move on?
Yeah.
Item number twenty three, twenty twenty three sixty four B C one forty four oh eight eighty seventh Road, Queens.
At the initial hearing, board had concerns regarding the application uh and that the findings were not met. Uh, applicant submitted a revised as of right renovation, a revised as of right new construction pursuant to Z E O regulations, and a revised proposed plan, including the demolition plan and revised financing. Um, applicant is continuing to seek uh use variance to convert the existing building um that contained uh ten SROs unit to a five uh dwelling units. And at the last hearing, we had asked uh the applicant to provide a certificate of no harassment, which has been provided. Um, I would say um I just have overall still the same set of issues that I've had uh with the prior application, um, and that is with the revised statement of facts. Um, that the statement is not at all being supported by any analysis, and uh it it is really a very poorly, I would say, um prosecuted um application. Be that as it may, I'm just going to proceed, but I'm not going to accept this kind of application in future. I just want to be very clear because we have asked this request over and over again, and and it is a very standard request that we ask, and we still seem to be having um resistance from applicant from providing such information. Um. So with regards to finding A, applicant presented uh obsolescence of converting the existing building to a conforming two-family uh residential home as a hardship. Now, the building has existed over hundred years, and over the last several years, as I mentioned, it has been used as an SRO. Now, to address the obsolescence uh argument, an as of right uh renovated with two dwelling unit was compared uh with an as of right new construction um on this irregular uh shaped lot. Now, the as per this uh as of right new construction, it would provide two semi-detached two-family um uh buildings, and if uh building one uh would have um two two-bedroom units, and building two would have two uh one-bedroom units. Um, so upon a review of these two and looking at the two as of rights uh developments, I would agree that the irregular shape of the site would provide two as of right two-family semi-detached new construction buildings with atypical floor plates. The unit sizes are eight hundred and seventy square foot, though the unit sizes are pretty decent. Unit sizes are eight hundred and seventy square foot for for one bedroom and an eight hundred and eighty square foot for two bedroom, much better than what is being proposed. With regards to the as of right new construction um uh floor plate, I would say that board has reviewed similar irregular sites um that are much smaller uh with irregular floor plates that were better laid out. So I feel that um the applicant very purposefully made the as of right new construction floor layout um not very functional, and it has not been well thought out in terms of the way it has been laid out. Um, so as I would call it, it has been purposefully poorly laid out. So with that stated, I though would agree that the as of right new construction uh would have irregular floors while it would allow four residential units of two bedrooms and one bedrooms. I think all four could be two bedrooms if laid out properly. Um, so regarding the as of right renovation, there would be an oversized four-bedroom dwelling unit um and a woefully undersized four-bedroom uh with um uh four-bedroom unit. And uh, so the justification for finding A, the applicant focused on the size of the units that would uh that would be, as the applicant states, quote, "out of character with the neighborhood and im uh and and impractical to market uh to the local community." So for me, without any evidence, to me, the statement is very anecdotal. Since no supporting document has been provided, narrative needs to be supported with data to back this kind of statement. The study area should be greater than four hundred feet and include sites that are within R four one district. And this was asked at the last hearing, and it has not been provided to date. What was um, I also would like to know what was the prior use of the building before it was converted to SRO, just to see if that can also further help their argument. Um, so with regards to the B findings, um applicant has provided comps. This time, they provided comps for four bedroom, two bedrooms, but did not include the comps for one bedroom. Um, so I and I had stated this, I think, I at the last hearing, but I will state it here very clearly again, is that I do have uh concerns regarding the comps, and the comps only outline the monthly rent and the unit type, but not the unit size. So the rent of a four-bedroom in an eight hundred and fifty square foot can't be same as the rent of for a four-bedroom in an oversized one uh one thousand plus square foot space. So they have to be different, and the the comps does not talk about size. It though there's size adjustment that's been made, but it doesn't talk about the size. So the question uh that uh the question is the does the four-bedroom rent adjustment um are they representative of the market condition, and this would affect both the as of right renovated and the proposed? Um. Moving on to finding C. Uh, at the last hearing, board had asked for an analysis of the development in the study area and the number of units and number and floor area per square of per unit. Uh, it has not been provided, and uh the applicant keeps referring to the two immediately adjacent uh multiple dwelling, which is not the predominant context. I did look through Zola, and uh most of the development, predominant development types here is two bedrooms. There are a few three-bedroom units on larger sites um and uh except these two that are multi uh uh multiple dwelling. We did receive a deed document as of last evening, five o'clock, though it's incomplete. The submission is incomplete, and and this is, these are these little things, very simple things, but they bother me because they're very simple things. And and this is a very standard request that the board has asked. Uh, the submission does not respond to the findings. Uh, the applicant needs to show if the subject lot has been in uh has been commonly held to date um with abutting lots. Uh, there is a standard format board has been asking for, and the applicant should be familiar with this standard. All we got was a deed document from nineteen fifties and sixty when I I and no other evidence to show whether the same ownership still holds today, nothing. So moving on to fi finding E, just to kind of minimum minimize our pain and make it very clear for the applicant what I want. Um, in because of lack of lot of evidence and just based on what I did as searched uh on my own, which I shouldn't be doing and which none of the board members should be doing. This is the job of the applicant. Uh, since the proposal is to rent, the need for smaller unit is driving the projects versus a homeownership project where larger unit sizes would have been more viable. Be that as it may, I'll accept the rent uh proposal. Um, as stated earlier, the as of right new construction would permit four dwelling units consisting of two one-bedrooms and two two-bedroom units. And um and as of right new construction would require demolition of the existing building, and the new construction would result in not so typical unit configuration. So the comps that have been provided, as I said, has not addressed the unit sizes. And as I was looking looking through Street Easy, I did find uh some units with unit sizes.
Oh.
And um there were a few that were um that based on which it may um I am clear that the proposed unit sizes, uh, it is evident that the proposed unit sizes are much smaller in sizes than uh what I at least I was able to see for one bedrooms and two bedrooms, so which might be affecting the returns. So to address the minimal, and uh and this is a direction, not a recommendation, direction, the maximum unit size shall be limited to four dwelling units as uh would be permitted in an as of right new construction. Without having to, this would, you don't have to tear down the building. You just have to reconfigure um your three floors to allow for four dwelling units, and uh and this would allow um also spare the applicant from creating irregular floor plates, which an as of right new construction would have. And um and the four dwelling units in this existing building would be better sized than what is being proposed. And that is my my direction and. Uh, Vice Chair Chivetta?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, uh, that was very thorough. I don't want to be repetitive. Um, I did not receive the ownership uh email of looking for you that came in this, the lot ownership came in last night?
Uh, yeah, it probably was like at around five o'clock. It says a deed.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Three thirty nine yesterday.
At three thirty nine.
It chose just the deed situation as of nineteen sixty one.
Right, nineteen sixty one, nothing, nothing from then.
Nothing after that.
Yeah.
So, uh.
So the question of D.
Right, um, so we really don't have any, uh, I I don't seem to have any finding met yet. Uh, I really have nothing further to add.
Commissioner Artley Brown?
So I actually um am in agreement with you, Chair, although they did make some uh corrections at to my financial questions in terms of the financial analysis itself, in terms of uh including the comparables page that was missing. Um, they did not address the size differential, like you said. And so that to me is is a major issue in terms of the rents that you can actually get, but I think the argument that they're presenting here is that it really isn't about square footage. It's about the number of bedrooms in a rental, whether or not they're sized large or small or whatever. It's the number of bedrooms that actually is the determinant of the rental price. And you know, at this point, I'm willing to even accept those assumptions as given to us and then use the information that they gave to us to determine whether or not this is the minimum variance. So if you look at the math, basically, I do understand that um an as of right with just two apartments, it's not enough, what you would get in income is not enough to overcome even the renovation costs. I do understand that the new construction costs for an as of right that would give us the two um two-family homes, the costs are too high to overcome the limited amount of rent that you would get for those contrived unit sizes that are really like small and irregularly laid out. And so by logic, one would say that an an existing building that just has renovation costs but provides more units would actually be a better situation for the owner. That being given, I don't believe they need five units. And so I took their assumptions and just did a quick back-of-the-envelope analysis of what would happen if they had only four apartments instead of five, and if they had four apartments that were two four-bedroom apartments and two other apartments, one of which is a two-bedroom and one of which is a one-bedroom, just using their own information, I came to the conclusion that four apartments work. Four apartments also falls in line with their actual argument that basically says, if you if you ask me to demolish this building, the maximum I could get is four units and four units that are badly laid out, not as good as four units that are well laid out and also with less construction costs. So therefore, they should be happy with four units maximum. So therefore they should be happy with four units maximum. That's all they're going to get from this board. So while I'm not happy with the information that we've been given, I've been able to work with that information and still come up with the idea that they're asking for too much in five apartments and they only need four, and that's using their own analysis basically to support this.
Okay, this is. This basically is a direction then. I was going with my gut, but you confirmed. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Sheta.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with the Commissioner Brown that, uh, the value of the existing building plus the renovation cost. If they go with the as of right scenario with single or two family house, uh, is not going to be helpful to them. Uh, it wouldn't like generate, uh, like reasonable return. That being said, uh, I decided to refer to the financials and the numbers in them. And I believe numbers told, if, if the direction is to go with four units, then let them go with four units and let, let, let's get this done. So hopefully they listened and they will proceed accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Yun.
Thank you. Um, ultimately I agree with everybody here. I do want to say a couple of things just because, um, as the chair stated, as maybe everyone has stated, the submission I think was lacking. And so for future submissions, I think we should just address some of the things that I've noted, um. This is a density waiver. It's not a use waiver. The SRO use is a res, uh, the SRO use is functionally obsolete and I think everybody accepts that. But here you're proposing a density of five units and they are the most dense units I have ever seen. And not a single comp that you've provided to date shows us a four bedroom that is below a thousand square feet or a two bedroom that's below six hundred square feet. All of your comps are, what I would say are more normal sized units, a three bedroom that's eleven hundred square feet. So not only are you asking for an increase in the number of units that's permitted, you're asking for incredibly squished, very dense units within that count. So the comps don't support any of the financials to me because you don't clearly state any of the comparable unit sizes, which I think do have a pretty large impact on what kind of rent you can get. Um, I think you're using the average four bedroom rent or two bedroom rent based on how you've modified your comps with the size adjustments, but then you apply them to both your as of right new construction, which is an eight hundred and eighty square foot apartment. And then you compare, you use the same number for your proposed, which is five hundred and fifty square feet. It would not garner the same rent. It doesn't make any sense. Um, the statement of fact cites that there's a twenty three hundred square foot four bedroom in the as of right renovation, which is maybe four hundred square feet more than what it actually is. There's just this, what feels like an inflation, um, or maybe a superlative, uh, description of how unmarketable these, uh, as of right renovated units would be. But I don't think there was much effort to actually prove that to us, though it's frustrating. Um, minor things like in the financials, the as of right renow versus the proposed should not be the same price because you have way more kitchens and bathrooms in the proposed than you do in the as of right renovation. It should be significantly lower, but you price them exactly the same. You instead increase the soft costs by thirty eight percent for legal fees. Um, it just feels very convenient. And again, I mean, I'm not, I don't know that we want to go through this again. I think that the decision by several people here to limit the density to four units is something that I agree with. I just wanted to say that because it's frustrating to look at this, especially when we talked about it at the last hearing. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, and you know, this is not the first up its kind application. We see these kind of applications quite often, then there's a very standard set of documents that the board requires. Um, and, and I think that's what makes it even more frustrating for all of us to have to repeat and ask for this information. And as everybody pointed out and Commissioner Yun, you have been very clear about it, is that the density factor is really what is bothering us because of the way the number of bedrooms, like in an eight hundred and fifty square foot, four bedrooms are being squished in. And I was looking at HPD, uh, standards. Uh, now that we are requiring this HPD standard, but just that's like a basic threshold of a dignified living condition that city has recognized and has asked for affordable housing. And a four bedroom requires minimum of nine hundred and fifty two thousand seventy five square foot, uh, of floor area. And here this project was squished in four bedrooms, uh, in an eight hundred and fifty square foot in the proposed thing. And all of the unit sizes fall short of all the basic standards. Um, so it is frustrating to see that and, 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 and expecting the board to kind of accept, um, the, the proposal and, and therefore I, I am not, I don't want to consider any more arguments. It just needs to be revised to show four units and how you lay out those four units. I, I think at this point, it's like it has to meet all the DOB standards and, uh, and the requirements. Because none of these comps are making sense and, and absence of the size, we don't know how these comps are really big. So just provide four, uh, four units in this. Um, that's it.
Sometimes we feel like that the applicants listen to the numbers and give priority to numbers, not to our directions and recommendations. Uh, Commissioner Yun, welcome aboard. If you joined the board five years ago, you would have been like more frustrated than that. They, this is the game all the time, playing with the numbers, tweaking them. And in this case, number of units equal the total area divided by the unit area to get to five, we have to, we have to make it extra.
Yes.
Squish it. We don't care. We need five. That's all. That I, I, I would like advise everybody who submits to us. We look, we review and we scrutinize. And if you submit something like that to us, it just delay your case. And we hate this to happen. But if, if you want to go that route, it's not going to take you anywhere at the end. You're going to go where we want to, you go exactly. Nothing else.
Thank you all. Thank you for your, um.
For the.
Thoughtful deliberation.
We're going to do after the here.
We're going to do it all the way after the.
Here, okay.
I just.
So this. So this concludes the review session for August, August. April eighth, twenty twenty five, and it's become one of those weeks. April twenty eight, April eighth, twenty twenty five. Thank you, Wannan.
Um, uh, it is, uh, ten forty. We will resume in, um, uh, ten, in ten, uh, ten minutes. Okay.
Forty eight.
Oh, it's.
I have.
Yeah, thirty eight. Yeah, I, I'm rounding it to ten.
Okay.
Ten fifty.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
To proceed with the applicant.
Again, I did.
Uh, Commissioner, please. All right, Ms. Patience for, um, Sam.
Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for eight Tuesday, April eighth, twenty twenty five.
It's going to be.
The appeals calendar, continued hearing items, twenty twenty four oh one A, twenty eight forty eight, Barbara Tara Squings. This is.
I have let, uh, Ms., uh, Astu in.
Anastu in.
Yeah. Yeah, I've let, uh.
Oh.
Good morning.
All right. Good morning, Ms. Anagostu. All right. Good morning, Ms. Anna Agnastu. Um, is there anyone else with you?
No, it's just me.
Okay, um, you can state your name for the record and proceed. This is an appeals case and we don't. We're in.
Yes, Sandy Agnastu, representing the applicant.
Go ahead.
Um, I listened to the comments of the board at the, uh, earlier review session and, um, just wanna comment on them. We, uh, in response to the D E P and Fire Department comments, we removed all obstructions from the proposed sewer corridor, uh, including dry well, uh, stairs, um, ramps, so there's nothing there, um, and we submitted that revised site plan. Uh, we will also provide a revised builder's pavement plan to reflect the revised site plan and we'll submit that in our next submission, um. The, we did, uh, so regarding the Parks Department, we submitted this application back in June of twenty twenty four to Parks and then have been in communication with them, spoke with a representative who, um, conveyed to us that they had no objections and we requested a letter of no objection, but they typically don't do that, is what we were told, um, but we will follow up to see if we can get this in writing. Additionally, we submitted a an application for the proposed street trees, which is under review. That was submitted to the Department of Parks in August of twenty twenty four. It's under review. They asked us to obtain an updated survey, which we did, and we submitted that this past March. So we will keep following up with the Parks Department, but that's the status as it stands. Um, regarding DOT, we have not received official comments from DOT. Um, but looking back at the previous resolution, there were two buildings which were approved at this site in two thousand eight under calendar number one sixty two oh six A and one sixty five oh six A, and the DOT comments at that time was to provide sidewalk and curb in alignment with the existing sidewalk and curb on the north side of Faber Terrace for the entire length of the proposed lots. And, um, we've done that. They also indicated that the applicant's property is not within their ten year capital plan. I realize it's been a few years since then and we can get an updated letter, but other than that, they did not have any other objections at that time, but we still have not received any official um, objections or comments from DOT. Um, we're waiting for D E P and Fire Department sign offs, but we did respond to their latest comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think, uh, even an e- email from Parks Department to you, um, can be, um, and, and to our project manager would be sufficient.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for the update. Uh, any questions or comments for? Uh, okay, let's go to the public then.
The case we're currently discussing is twenty twenty four oh one A, twenty eight forty eight, Farber Terrace Queens. Should you wish to conference on this application? Dell six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six zero eight one zero two three 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 and press the pound sign. At the next prompt after that, you'll press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute as you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room or ready and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you're recognized, you'll have three minutes in which to discuss. How much time?
Yeah. How much time would you need to make these changes and corrections?
Uh, I would say about three weeks, two or three weeks.
I'm going to make a recommendation that we close and wait for. Uh, and during that time, hopefully we can get an email con- confirmation from Parks and if DOT is going to provide. Uh, um, yeah. Ready for the platform.
Yeah.
On the point. Yeah, downstairs and things like that. So. I'm going to make a motion to close and the record will be kept open for you to make submissions. And, uh, hopefully we can get something from Parks, if at all, from DOT.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So motion to go Chair Shonda, aye? Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown? Commissioner Ashada?
Aye.
Commissioner Yoon?
And I will schedule this for May nineteenth decision. That gives enough time for everybody.
May first is submission date.
Yeah.
Okay, item number twenty 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 four. Thank you, Ms. Agnastu. Sorry, how rude of me. Okay, item number twenty twenty four forty three A and twenty twenty four forty four A, forty two and sixty two, Joanne Court, Staten Island.
Start let, uh, Mr. Deon Dale, yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Adele. Please state your name for the record and please respond to the board's comments at review session.
Good morning, Todd Dale for the applicant. Uh, I did listen to the review session, um, and I believe that the board is generally satisfied, but I wanted to provide a little bit of clarity, uh, with respect to the drainage plan discussion that was raised. Um, just to give some general background, um, first, I would say that the eighteen to twenty four months that was cited by the engineer in response to Commissioner Shadda's question would be if the modification were required, that's how long the process would take. Now, with respect to the drainage plan, as we noted in our submission, we did request a copy of the current drainage plan. To clarify, what the drainage plan is, is just like the city has its mapped streets and you know, we use the common term of a paper street, street that might be on the map that's not actually built or developed. D E P also has drainage plans for area in the city that, um, uh, work in much the same function as the city map where the drainage plan will sometimes have paper utilities or theoretical utilities. So in this instance, the drainage plan for this area may have theoretical future sewers that would run underneath the mapped Orangeburg Avenue. They're not actually built yet, but the drainage plan shows them. And really, the drainage plan exists so that when you were building in the city as a right, if you do not have an application required relief from the board, but you're building as a right, it allows, um, uh, development to know where city utilities are so that when you file an S C P, a site connection proposal, you know where that these, these utilities will be. And it provides an assurance and basically a template so that when you're building, you know how you can connect. What D E P's primary concern is with respect to the drainage plan is that if we build on top of this, uh, uh, Paper Street, Orangeburg Avenue, we would be removing these theoretical lines and what it does is it's less about this project. But if other developers in the area use the drainage plan and see these sewers, they just want an assurance so that the next person building knows that those lines don't exist anymore, right? So what the first step is, and when we talk about modification, the drainage plan is we're still waiting for the drainage plan. The first scenario might be that when we receive the actual drainage plan, there may be no utilities in Orangeburg Avenue, in which case a modification isn't required. Then we're, we're fine to proceed. However, if there are these theoretical lines under there, what would happen is the project engineer would work with D E P to reroute those lines, basically like, you know, train tracks, like moving them around so they would still be connected to where you would have, uh, existing, uh, silly city utilities and remove the lines and modify the drainage plan in such a way so that development of these buildings would then not require those lines, but then the system as a whole basically wouldn't get a break in the system. So that's, that's the idea behind a drainage plan modification. And really, the best way to think about it is that if you have paper streets, you also have paper utilities that are associated with them. The site connection proposal and site connection for this project would connect to the existing water mains or the sewers that are under the private road. So they're really two different processes that don't really connect. One of them is about the theoretical and the map, and one is about how it would actually connect. We would still need to file an S C P as we would with any development in the city. And the drainage plan is just providing insurance to D E P that this development won't put a permanent, you know, problem in their overall map to the system. So I hope that provides some clarity and the twenty four months that's estimated is because if you do need to manage the drainage, uh, modify the drainage plan, you then need to come up with a system where you're designing a system where you would have alternate sewers and to, to assure that the system as a whole is still connected there.
When, when you say that we're waiting for a drainage plan, what, what do you mean by that?
So, uh, I, I can't speak to how D E P's administration works, but the drainage plan has to be ordered by a engineer or architect. The unit at D E P that reviews B S A applications can't request, or they won't request, I don't know what the policy reason is, but they won't get the D E plant, E plan, drainage plan themselves. So they require us as applicants to file and request the drainage plan, which was from a different unit of D E P. We get the drainage plan and then we could provide it to the record. I'm not sure why we have to be the conduit and D E P that reviews B S A applications can't just get it themselves, but that's that's what's happening. So once we get the drainage plan, if we get the drainage plan, you know, we could submit it to the record, but bigger picture, I would say, you know, if the board is agreeable and is satisfied, otherwise, as we've done on the applications, we would agree to a prior to a T C O that the drainage plan need to be modified. But if we get the mo- the drainage plan in time, we can submit it to the record and have D E P take a look at it, but since that's really sort of a a separate process, um, and if the board is otherwise satisfied, that, that process could run separate from this particular approval.
And, and the eighteen to twenty four months, you said that it's not for just the, the engineer to design. It's for the engineer to propose, then redesign and interact with the E P and then finalize and get it approved.
A hundred percent, yeah. If, if, if it's required, it can take eighteen to twenty four months to, to get it reviewed. D P engineers, this engineer makes sure that they're satisfied with, with the change in the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um, thank you for that explanation. I just have a general question. When this entire, uh, development was laid out, I'm sure it was laid out, um, keeping with the, to modify the amended drainage plan.
It probably was, but during the era that this was laid out, a different level of review occurred for G C L thirty five and G C L thirty six applications. And I defer to the institutional memory of like Commissioner Otley Brown, Carlo Antonio have been there a long time. Applications of that type weren't necessarily referred to D E P back at that time. So I don't know historically what was done with the drainage plan, but you are correct. It, it, it would follow that the drainage plan would have had to have been reviewed at some point, but I'm not sure if it was done at the B S A process or was done at D O B or city planning or at a different point in the process.
When, when we talk about rerouting, let's, my, my understanding is that you get the drainage plan from the D U P, let's say D U P look at it and inspect it, and then they see that there is, there is a, like a missing link in the continuity of that sewer from the source to the destination, then they're gonna ask for an amendment. That, that, the additional work that needed to be rerouted, design and construction is, is overtaken by the applicant or by the city?
Uh, the review of the design is done by the applicant and it's presented to D E P who would then, um, uh, approve it. It may not actually need to be constructed.
Yes.
Because there's already private sewers or other existing sewers in the area that, that these buildings could file for S C P independently and get their approval. This is really about sort of the theoretical future plan. These are really theoretical utilities, but they just wanna make sure that this development doesn't cause some fatal flaw in the system as a whole, but truly, in many instances, we're moving a theoretical line to a different location for a theoretical line and it's never built.
But if there is a rerouting, construction work.
I'm sorry.
Constructed by the applicant or by the city?
Um, uh, I don't know who would be responsible for the construction. In my experience, the projects I've been in, when we've had to modify the drainage plan, it's just been theoretical lines removed and new theoretical lines added, or in some instances, theoretical lines removed and not added to the plan again because it was realized they wouldn't be needed at all.
Okay.
I personally haven't been in a project where we've had to rebuild separately. I would suspect that if it was outside the property owner's area, the D E P might want to take control of that project, but I'm gonna defer. We're getting, we're getting into areas that I'm not comfortable speaking on authority.
The, the reason I'm asking is that if, if, if the coast is undertaken by the city, it might be better for the D U B to look first.
To Commissioner Shada, this is totally out of our, our ability. I think what Mr. Dale has clearly indicated, like D maps, like, uh, map street beds unbuilt, we have these mapped sewer lines and utility, utility lines, but many of them have not been built and this could be a situation in this area where we have a map street bed under which there are these map drainage lines and D, D E P rightfully wants to make sure that if there is some connection somewhere, that, um, that flow of that connectivity continues and so therefore that three, uh, the theoretical line has to be moved somewhere else. And it is not, uh, it's on paper, it has to be moved somewhere else. And who builds it becomes a responsibility of whoever has control of that portion of the street, um, but not for uh, Todd Dale's, uh, Mr. Dale's applicant, um, uh, client. Uh, they are responsible for connecting to the sewer lines that is going to be within the bed of the streets that they are proposing. And it has to comply with all the D E P requirements and, and, uh, standards. Uh, that's what their responsibility. I think in this case specifically, what I found very interesting is that tax map has this private maps clearly laid out and, and bless you.
Right.
And, uh, and the map street is shown in a dotted line. So it's a very interesting overlay of this situation. And this development has been happening since nineteen nineties, I think, in bit by bit. And these streets have been built over time with all the connectivity that is required for any new development. So, um, I, I, I think, uh, Mr. Dale did a pretty good job of explaining, um.
Yes, I agree. Yes, thank you. And I, I just, I just wanted, I, I understand that we don't wanna cross the bridge before we get to the bridge. Let's, let's wait and see if D A B ask for an amendment, then we, we can, we can see.
Right, and we do it as a pretty standard procedure for any of these G C Ls, um, that, uh, the amended drainage plan should be modified if D E P requires it would be as part of the, uh, it would be a parallel process while the applicant is proceeding with uh, securing a work permit and building up the site because they don't need the sewer line. Uh, I think before they start, they should have the drawings to clearly know whether there's reels, which I think they don't have, they would have known this by now, uh, or whether it's just theoretical.
Understood, thank you.
Um, I, I believe, um, Deputy Chief Bellis is here, yes. Uh, Deputy Chief, uh, do you want to state anything? Um, any, any update that you want to give?
Well, good morning, Madam Chair and Board. I did listen to the review and I just wanted to state that since the roads are, they're gonna be thirty four feet wide, they do comply with fire code. And that we're just gonna leave that, uh, proposition, I'm gonna turn it to a recommendation for the signage, being that it is a concern for the engines to take those turns.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think, um, just as a practice, we cannot impose this because the, the, much of the site area has been built and, uh, And, uh, many property owners have acquired, property acquired and the sites have been built with an understanding, so um, it's a recommendation, Mr. Dale, if, should you want to proceed, should your client want to proceed. Um, it's a recommendation.
Understood. And we've passed on that information to the, uh, to the property owner, but we understand this recommendation.
Um, any other questions or comments? Let's go to the public then. The case that we're currently discussing is twenty twenty-four forty-three A. Sorry. Case that we're currently discussing is twenty twenty-four forty-three A, forty-two Joanne Fort Staten Island and twenty twenty-four forty-four A, sixty-two Joanne Fort Staten Island. Should you discuss either of these items, dial six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six zero eight one zero two three 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 and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you'll press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you will press star nine to raise your hand. Star six to unmute as you're calling in on the phone. Any of them in the Zoom room are ready and wish to participate, please raise your Zoom hand, which is the little hand at the bottom of your computer screen. Once you are recognized in any format, then you will have three minutes in which to discuss. I don't think we need any submission. I'm going to recommend that we close. Is everybody okay with that? And, uh, we don't need any submission.
From yeah.
From the applicant or from anybody, I think.
Okay.
Fine. We have everything that we need.
Okay.
Um.
Chair, if I could just interject, if we do receive the drainage plan, we're happy to submit it to the record, but I don't know if you want it.
I, I think it would be good for the record, absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
Just waiting for the clock to run. I'm just curious, how old are these drainage plants? When, were they ever modified or is it just one static plant in a certain area?
I think it varies depending on the area and just when you've seen like, you know, it's not a one-to-one. But like with the tax map, you see the line in tax map, some of these drainage plans are older and if they've never had to be modified, they may still be as they were twenty, thirty years ago, whereas in areas where you see more new development, I would suspect, um, again, not having first analysis, but I would suspect that in Staten Island, they're probably more current just because you've seen more building in, in, in different areas. I'm guessing center of Manhattan, it's probably not changed as much.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Um, I'm going to make a recommendations that we close and applicant should, um, will, um, will submit a drainage plan if they receive it in time. I'm, uh, I'm going to schedule this for May nineteenth. Uh, decision. So I think that will give you plenty of time to get the drainage plan in hand and submit it.
Understood. Thank you.
So the motion to close to both applications, twenty twenty-four forty-three A and twenty twenty-four forty-four A. Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeda.
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zoning calendar, item number twenty-two. Twenty twenty-two ninety-five BZ, twelve forty-nine Sutter Avenue, Brooklyn. Aye, let, uh, Mr. Khazada in. Um, yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is, uh,
My name is Zaman Shanto.
Yep.
And I'm Mafrain.
And we're going to be representative as for applicant.
Okay, raise your right hands. Do you affirm tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, state your name again for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Zaman Shanto.
Mafrain.
So, thank you, Board, for your comment. Uh, we are very thrilled that finally this case is come to an end, kind of. So as per.
Oh, no, you still, your applicant, uh, your operator still has all the banners, so they need to remove these banner.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
That they cannot additional signs than what they have on the plans. Please tell them that.
Yeah. So, I mean, as per Chairperson suggested that we will gonna go to the site owner and operator. We're gonna talk, we're gonna have a meeting, me and Stimal along, we have Mr. Khazada. So we're gonna address them that they should restripes their parking spaces and car wash queuing line every two or three months in order to get them maintain the site properly. Then next is, so permanent divider. So we tried to propose permanent divider, but however, the car wash operator says that he has some problem with issue with the permanent divider because it is very, you know. So it's very dangerous for him to maintain the permanent divider. So somebody could, you know, break, yeah, so somebody could damage the permanent divider. So we try to not to use the permanent divider. And talking about the excessive banner, so last time there was, there was so much signs and banner, we tried to take them down, but however, the operators keep using, bring it back, bringing them up. So we will gonna take, yeah, arrange a meeting and tell them that, that they should take those banner and if they want, may I suggest, can they use any temporary banner while, while they are operating?
No, no, there's nothing called temporary. The zoning doesn't allow temporary banner and, and anything temporary unfortunately becomes permanent. So none, not at all. There's enough signage on this site. It is quite visible, the car wash and all the other signs are very, very visible. So no additional signage other than what is on the plan.
Okay, okay. So um, so me and Mr. Jamal, Mr. Khazada will personally visit the site and we will talk to the site owner and car, car wash operator to remove the banner and in future, they shouldn't, and we will convince that in future that they will not going to propose any banner at all on the site.
Photos of the removal of the banners. So we need proposal, um, of these removed structures and if it has been two to three months since they have restriped, they should also restriped. Um, and can you put it in a letter with an, um, that affidavit notarized uh, by the operator regarding the maintaining the striped parking spaces, not having excess signage and, um, maintaining the site, uh, free of debris?
Sure, sure.
Excess signage. Striping, right? Yeah, signage, striping, uh, make, keeping the site free of debris.
Free of debris.
Um, and trash stored in the trash containers. And vehicles, oh, and vehicles not obstructing the sidewalks.
Sure. We will, I will provide a statement about all these changes.
And an affidavit signed by the operator.
Sure.
And notarized. Uh, no, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Yun, do you have any additional?
No, I think the discussion about flexible delineators that we had at the last hearing and non-damaging ballards, that sort of thing. We could talk about that offline, how we want to approach future cases, but there, there's definitely non-damaging delineators and that's what we talked about the last night is there's some
Okay.
way of, just because if people don't use the lanes, they do end up out in the road. And I did find that when I was
You did. Okay.
Just because they'll single file and you can't fit ten cars in the single file, you can only fit them in the three across.
So you're saying they're not using the three, 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 uh, layout configuration?
Naturally, cus- customers don't line up that way. They're going to just line up one in front of the other. So that's why we had, from my recollection and my notes, that's why we discussed the delineators last time. Because otherwise it will become a problem on the main street.
Okay, so, um, Commissioner Yun is, um, is referring to flexible deline- flexible ballards, and I think these are the ones that are very thin ones.
They're plastic with a fl-.
Plastic ones.
See them.
Right.
They'll bend if they need.
Yeah, so they, they're not going to damage any vehicle, they're going to bend. So why can't that be provided as a way to, uh, keep the cars in, um, the location, um, for, um, for the car wash. And, and as Commissioner Yun, based on a side visits, what she noticed, instead of vehicles parking three, three, two, right? Um, that's the configuration, whatever the configuration is. Or three, four, four, whatever the configuration is, in reality, that's not what is happening. It's only one car up behind the other that's lining up and it is therefore backing into the sidewalk. That is absolutely not permitted. And that is why we had asked for a lot of these changes. So you need to, you need to have an operational plan that shows that the operator will direct the the, uh, car, of car to go to the next, um, set of, like, yeah, this is what, okay.
So these are, you know, relatively easy to buy, um, and I would think install and they clearly delineate the lanes without crossing. You know, it's not metal, it's rubber and they're plastic.
Yeah.
You buy two of those, separate these three lanes, then I think I'm satisfied.
And, and there are ones that are, I mean, I think there's, I see the red one at the bottom.
I mean, every bike lane in New York City probably has, you know, they're, they're all over the city.
So even this, this is, these are individual ones that you can line up also, those are all.
Those could just be.
Those are.
The problem with those is not fixed.
But this is, this is not going to prevent a mix up from a lane to lane, but the other one has a mount, um, like a, 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 an unmountable uh, barrier that they cannot go over it. So I would go with that one.
Okay, so, um, alright, thank you. Thank you. So I would say then go with that. And, uh, go talk to your client and, uh, have them install that.
Sure, sure. So, I mean, we will, we will talk to the client and we will gonna install and provide some photos.
And once, once you fix this, it's, it doesn't need like significant maintenance, it's minimal maintenance, I believe.
And, um, yeah, I think the one that Commissioner Yun suggests is better because it's not individual ones that are standing because they tend to kind of get moved around a lot more, whereas here you have it on a strip, uh, where these are mounted and this is all made out of rubber, so it's not going to damage any vehicles. And it's very easy to install and all you need is three of them for the alignment and you make sure, and at the same time, having that and having a person making sure the vehicles are not backing up. So do need to provide an operational plan that clearly indicates that the, uh, that is signed by the, uh, the operator of the car wash. That says that they will have somebody who will be monitoring that vehicles are not blocking the sidewalk. Okay? Okay. Um, how much time will you need to get all of this done?
Probably one month.
Okay. I still want a statement, operation, uh, an operational plan and an affidavit from, if there are different operators, provide different affidavits for, from different operators. Clearly outlining their responsibility in terms of managing and maintaining the site.
Sure.
Alright, uh, let's put it the public. Is, uh, okay? Yeah. The case that we're, okay, go ahead, go. The case that we're currently discussing is twenty twenty-two ninety-five BZ, twelve forty-nine Sutter Avenue, Brooklyn. Should you wish to comment on this application, dial six six nine two five four five two five two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one six zero eight one zero two three 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 and press the pound sign. At the next prompt, you'll press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, you'll press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute if you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room or ready and wish to raise your Zoom hand, it's the little hand on the bottom of your computer screen. Once you're recognized, you'll have three minutes in which to discuss. Um, you know, I have to say, when we got this case, we had so much concerns, um, and at that time we were thinking of a very short term, but I, I think in, over the years, you have made improvements and this last set of improvements that has been recommended. Um, those, those should be carried out before we vote it. So you need to install those ballards as, uh, as shown in the, uh, graphics. Uh, need to re-stripe the parking spaces, remove excess signage. Uh, get operational plan from each of the operators to ensure that there won't be any vehicles, uh, parked on the sidewalk or blocking the sidewalk. The site is fully maintained and free of debris and, uh, then, and the site is secure also. So those are the conditions, uh, I would put as part of my recommendation. And should you be able to provide all of that document at the end of one month, uh, we can vote it out with a ten-year term. Otherwise, I would, uh, be very reluctant to vote.
So, so I will held a meeting in this week, Friday, and we will gonna prepare everything by end of the month. And all the operational changes, we will provide some photos and hope, hope that we can fix all the issues.
Hopefully, the owner gets to maintain it as well. So I'm going to recommend we close and I will schedule this for June. Chair Shonda.
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeda.
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta.
Aye.
Commissioner Yun.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Board.
Okay. Next item is twenty twenty-three sixty-four BZ, one forty-four oh eight eighty-seventh Road, Queens. This would be Mr. Dale, he's there. Anyone else with you, Mr. Dale? And Jessica, right?
I believe Jessica was coming in, I'm not sure if she's.
No, no, we're finished. Uh, Mr., you're finished. Your, your case has been heard. Okay, um, raise your right hands. Do you affirm tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions?
I do affirm.
Yes, I do. Please state your name for the record and proceed to respond to the board's comments at review session.
Uh, good morning, still morning, Todd Dale for the applicant. Uh, I just want to say, uh, I did listen to review session and I want to thank the board for their very clear uh, review and direction with respect to this application. Uh, we believe it's going to be very helpful to bring to the property owner and the architect and the rest of the development team to uh, revise the application, uh, in response to those comments and, uh, uh, address all the issues that were raised. With respect to the discussion, um, really the, the threshold issue that comes through clearly is the thought that, uh, the five dwelling unit proposal should be revised to afford dwelling unit proposal. Um, we will bring that back. Um, we will bring that back to the, as I said, to the architect and the owner. Uh, examine the plans, uh revise the plans accordingly. Um, and really, uh, you know, based on the discussion, we are confident that a revision of this type would lead to being able to address all of the findings to the board's satisfaction. Uh, you know, adjusting the financial analysis, we'll, it'll help uh uh with the comps in the analysis and update the the feasibility, but we really, that's, that is clearly the threshold issue that was raised, and uh we understand the comments, and uh that's gonna lead to revision of all the materials and addressing the plans. Um, beyond, obviously, that core item, I just wanted to just make a couple of comments and some other requests that were made. Just so the board knows, um, I apologize for some of the confusion with the single and separate search. Um, uh, it is actually in progress and should be available for submission shortly. We'll submit it with other materials. But just so the board understands, we had reached out about a single and separate search. And historically, uh with title companies, uh the terminology, there was some confusion. Often, a single and separate search just focuses on December fifteenth of nineteen sixty-one and the present time because it's used in order to meet the findings for the small lot exception for development. So that's really often when those two deeds are set forth, but we'll get the 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 full set of deeds. But just from my understanding and, you know, perhaps a little clarity, um maybe you could explain why the, it's my understanding that the board wants this single and separate search in order to review the issue of self-created hardship. Um, with respect to ownership of adjacent lots. And, you know, as I said, we'll, we'll get that information, but I'm just hoping to get a little more understanding as to why it would be pertinent, like in a case, this particular case, because we did provide the nineteen eleven map showing that the lot's been in this configuration, the limit tax map, historical. And uh these materials also show that the surrounding buildings, or excuse me, the surrounding lots have always been developed too. So, you know, we've had instances where this has come up, when you have vacant lots next to vacant lots, where there's a consideration of the possibility of development with another parcel, or trying to confirm that a property owner hasn't uh subdivided a lot into two different vacant lots, and then, you know, citing self-created hardship. But in this instance, you know, we did provide materials showing the lot configuration, the configurations been consistent. And these surrounding lots have all been developed with structures. So I guess I'm just trying to get a little understanding as to why the full single and separate search would be pertinent in this case. I mean, we'll provide it, but I'm not fully understanding why it would come into play in this particular instance, and I don't know if there's any clarity that can be provided.
I'm sure Commissioner uh Artley Brown can provide more clarity on this, but my understanding of it is, is that when uh we have asked for this information, pretty much for any development, whether that's two uh contiguous vac- vacant sites or, or a development, uh a butting a vacant site, um or, or even development with the development. Um, the two sites with developments. I think the idea, uh the discussion purpose is to ensure that they have as it says, it's not been self-created, and if there was a, and, and in this case, I think providing that information can, so if, let's say there was common ownership at some point. If there was, I'm just hypothetically saying it because I remember seeing a case uh where there was a high uh owner, common ownership. But in that case, the argument was clearly laid out that combining these two would require tearing these buildings down. Right? And uh, and, and there is, and there are occupancy, the, the other building is fully occupied. So, you know, you, you're uh, you're not actually improving the condition, you're prob- you might be. Uh, so that, those are the arguments that we look for in that statement to kind of back up the evidence that has been provided, generated. I just, I hear what you're saying, but that's a that's the exercise that I've seen applicants provide in situations such as yours. And I think I've seen one, two cases similar to that. Yeah.
Understood. Okay, so as I said, it's in progress. It'll be actually the first item that we have prepared in order to submit uh for the next submission, so we'll, we'll provide that. Also, I just note, uh with respect to comments about neighborhood character, you know, we did provide the land use time, but we'll provide a more complete uh study of development in the area, uh and chair, as you noted, including the number of dwelling units and the floor area for that to provide uh more clarity and supplementing that in the materials, the statement and other materials. And then, of course, you know, we'll revise the statement once it's done, but really, um, you know, in, unless there's something I'm, I'm missing, it really seems that the core issue here is revising the proposed development based on the discussion that came up, and we understand the issues that were raised. And we, you know, in our initial discussion, believe that this is going to lead to revision of other materials and allow us to, to meet the findings to the board's satisfaction uh with a corresponding revision. Um, but I don't know if there's any other questions raised, but it seems really uh uh a written submission is gonna be the, the, the lead action in this particular case.
There's one thing I forgot to mention, I may have missed it in submission, but a clear parking calculation based on the proposal, which will now be changed if assume you come back with four, um and clearly stating whether it's an inter-transit zone and what type, so that, uh Pearl, obviously the latest, Z H O.
Okay, we'll make sure the parking calculation is included in any revision of the plans and submission.
Yeah, and would it need a waiver?
I had asked about it the last hearing, but since then, Z H O has been.
And this is, yeah.
And if it's in an inner transit zone, then nothing would be required, but we just asked, I had asked about parking at the last hearing, given that there were five units being closed.
Okay.
For Z H O.
We'll, we'll provide a, a clear calculation of that. I believe that it would be exempt, but we'll, we'll make sure that it's very clear.
We would need to then address that in your statement of fact also.
Yep, for sure. That's really, you know, for my purposes, it's really, the plan is gonna lead the financials and lead these other items. Uh, Jessica, I don't know if you had any other questions or comments?
Yeah, um hi, good morning. This is Jessica Corus from Corus Consulting on behalf of the applicant. Um, thank you for your time this morning and thoughtful review and comments on the application. Uh, we did hear your uh feedback and, and do appreciate um all the thought that went into this. Um, I wanted to just touch on a couple of points while I had your attention today. Um, regarding the four-bedroom apartments, this was a difficult market search, and when you look at the map, you can see how far, far and far and far I had to kind of stretch the search because there, these four-bedroom units are relatively rare in the local market. And what I was finding is that they weren't marketed with square footages listed. When a renter is out looking for a certain number of bedrooms, it's not really on a price per.
Can you speak closer to the mic?
Sure, I'm so sorry, I'll speak up. Is this better?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, excellent. Um, so yeah, eh eh, the um point I wanted to try and get across is that the rent uh on four bedrooms is generally determined by the number of bedrooms, not on a price per square foot basis. So in the rental markets, um we're looking at utility and unit type and not necessarily size. Um, so if the new revision does include four bedrooms, I will go out of my way to look for comps with square footages so that I am doing my best to satisfy the board, because I always want to try and address your comments as thoroughly as possible.
Reason, I'm just sorry to interrupt, uh the reason that the square footage comes up, if you're proposing what we collectively believe would be normal-sized units, we wouldn't be asking for a comp that shows us that it's such a such a comp exists in eight hundred fifty square foot four bedroom. If it was an eight hundred and fifty square foot two bedroom, like your as-of-right new construction, or like a lot of comps in the neighborhood, then we wouldn't even be asking about it probably. So it's driven by the incredibly unique tiny, tiny size that you guys are proposing in your plans.
And I, I think in the interest of everybody's time, the amount of time that has gone into a project of this size, I'm going, I'm going to suggest that don't change anything on the comps, leave it as is.
Okay.
And use the same comps as Commissioner Artley Brown did an analysis using your comps. Came up, came up with a conclusion that four unit works.
Okay.
And, and I would state that I don't want to see on the plan whether it's a two-bedroom, four-bedroom, three-bedroom, zero-bedroom unit, just lay out the units as an outside thing. The reason is, I really don't want to support an application with such tiny layouts and send the wrong message. So I rather would leave it to D O B and, and make sure that the unit configuration laid out meets all the D O B requirements.
So what, what the chair really is saying is you simplify it. We've done the math to show that, given your information that you gave to us, two four-bedrooms, one one-bedroom and one two-bedroom at the rents you stated for the four simp- the four-bedroom simplexes and the one-two-bedroom and the one-one-bedroom, that math works. Now, whether or not you go to D O B and they say to you, no, this layout doesn't work, we're not going to get into a back and forth about that. So for our purposes, for the financials, give us the information that we asked for, as I just stated it, to make it simpler. On the plans, don't specify bedrooms, give us the outer partitions of the apartments. So you could have a floor with one apartment, a, another floor with one apartment, and a floor that has a bifurcation. There'll be two apartments on that floor, and what you could get at D O B is between you and D O B. If it turns out that they're fine with those being two four-bedroom apartments, that's fine. Because you've accounted for that in the financials. They look at your layout and they say, that's not gonna work, we want three bedrooms. And the fourth could be a den or whatever, that's between you and them. You don't have to come back to us, because we're not looking at the individual layout. That resolves our issue on the board between whether or not four bedrooms is actually gonna work from a planned perspective or not.
And from a financial perspective, that makes perfect sense to us, and um we'll certainly, um you know, uh proceed in that manner. Um, ju- so thank you for uh providing that flexibility. And Todd, please just jump in if um I'm overstepping on.
I'm happy to give that direction to the.
Okay, all right. Um, one other thing that I wanted to bring up because.
Actually, thinking of three-bedroom initially.
Three units.
Three units. I was thinking of three units, sorry. And, and I, I think Commissioner Yun, you had mentioned that you were, you also thought at most three would be viable. So going from three to four, take it. Don't argue.
Okay. No, um, I, I wanted to um switch to the um cost estimate. If I can have one more moment of your time, um I, I know you guys had a long day yesterday, so I'll, I'll keep this brief. Um, we did switch from the cost estimator to the Marshall and Swift handbook. And um when we're estimating renovation costs, um I tried to be as accurate as possible, but I, please understand, this is a tool that's designed primarily for new construction. And I felt like I was trying to squeeze a, a round peg into a square hole. And um when I was applying it in this renovation context, I did notice that um on a square footage basis, the as-of-right renovation and the proposed renovation are basically the same amount of square footage. And so they were identical in that manner when using Marshall and Swift. So I just thought it might be helpful to provide a little context that um in the limitations that I have in the handbook, um I did the best I could. Um, and it wasn't in attempt to obscure any sort of facts. And then I also heard a comment on the uh higher soft costs than the proposed, even though the construction costs are the same, and that is due to um legal fees uh related to securing the necessary approvals. So um it just costs a little more to get a project approved than something that goes as-of-right straight to the buildings department. So, just a little uh c- context there, and I, um again, I always try and do my best to provide you guys with the information I have available. And um, you know, if, if there is something that you noticed in the handbook, like I said, this handbook is still, it's a learning experience for me. Um, I'm not a cost estimator, but um if there is something in the handbook that I can say kitchens and bathrooms, you know, times two, um I'll put that in, I would love to, but I don't want to make that change right now. I just want you to understand where um I'm approaching, how I approached it.
Thanks for addressing my comments, and I realize I am not thoroughly familiar with all the pages of Marshall and Swift.
It's like a thousand pages, it's.
I'm growing off of just practical experience. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Thank you for responding to the comments.
Thank you.
Any other suggestions, thoughts or questions? Okay, all right, let's go to the public then. The case that we're currently discussing is twenty twenty-three sixty-four B Z, one forty-four oh eight eighty-seventh Road, Queens. Should you wish to discuss, dial six, six, nine, two, five, four, five, two, five, two. At the prompt, you'll enter the webinar ID number one, six, zero, eight, one, zero, two, three, 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 and press the pound sign. At the prompt, after that, you'll press the pound sign only. Once you're permitted in, press star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute, if you're calling in on the phone. And if you're in the Zoom room already, please raise your Zoom hand, which is little hand on the bottom of your computer screen. Once you recognize, you'll have three minutes in which to discuss. Um, I'm gonna keep this as a continued case because we need to see the full submission. And I see Ms. Benke's and um.
Wanted to note that we're still awaiting the A Q analysis. Um, there was a submission that said that H V A C and industrial land survey was forthcoming. So um we're still waiting for that, and obviously, any changes based on today's hearing will have to be updated in the E A S.
I will check with the environmental team on that. Thank you.
Thanks.
So this will be for continued, and I'm gonna schedule this for June. I think you'll need one entire month to get everything together.
I was gonna say, sorry to interrupt here, I was gonna say, just because a lot of this work is is sequential as opposed to concurrent, I mean, we really need the plans in order to move on to some of the next steps, so. Um, yeah, June seems fine, if not later. Um, do you know what the submission date would be?
Uh, hold on.
What date are you looking at?
June sixteenth would be May twenty-ninth.
July fourteen will be June, sorry, be June twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth.
That June date actually would not work for me, because I'm going to my niece's wedding, so um the hearing after the June sixteenth would be better, if possible.
So it would be the July hearing?
Yeah.
I think that would be best, and that I'd rather have a little too much time than a little too short time.
Okay. All right, so it's the July hearing. Okay, so we don't see that anyone raised their hands. Okay? Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank, okay, um, no, don't close it yet. No, no, we have uh, we have to go to a second call. So we're a second call item on twenty twenty, a decision item, twenty twenty-four forty-two B Z. Twenty thirty-one Eastern Parkway Extension, Brooklyn. Just scrolling through my notes, just give me these. So first of all, I just want to find out from our uh team, um, do we have all the necessary sign-offs and is?
Yes, and we received the final E A S.
Right, great. So I, first of all, I want to really thank uh Ms. Benke and Ms. Pranga. Uh, they have really done an amazing job of getting this application together and processing it and coordinating with the all the city agencies. And processing it and coordinating with the, all the city agencies uh, internally and um, also with the applicants, so. Very much appreciate and thank you. So, um. The. So there are some envi, based on the environmental sign-off, there are some environmental conditions. Uh, I'll start with the HAZMAT. An E designation for HAZMAT has been placed on the zoning map pursuant to section eleven dash fifteen of the New York City zoning resolution. For the subject property and further hazardous noise, uh, sorry, further hazardous. Assessment uh, shall be coordinated through Mayor's Office of Environmental Coordination. Um, there's a noise uh, also, um, condition, that is all uh, facades of the uh, future building. Must provide at least thirty-five DBA of window wall atten- attenuation. And alternate means of ventilations to ensure acceptable interior noise level. Um, with that, I want to make a motion to approve with additional conditions. And the conditions are, and these should be reflected in the C, uh, CEO. The building shall provide hundred percent uh, affordable uh, housing pursuant to terms and conditions of HPD's extremely low. And low income affordability known as Ella uh, program or an equivalent program. Um, that this grant shall not be transferred to another developer or HDFC without the consent of the board. Our uh, commissioners, are you all okay with those conditions? Uh, Ms. Benke?
Hi, we did have a few other um, environmental conditions, um. Not sure if you, if you want them um, as a conditions there on the plans, if you want me to read them.
Uh, I, I think I know which one you, you're referring to, these are the standard requirements of HVAC and um, uh, uh, zero emission and. Those are the requirements as uh, going forward with every development that is going to be built. I, I, that's my understanding.
Right, there, there was one that is specifically based on the EAS, um.
Which one is that?
If all applicable laws and regulations permits, permit the use of fossil fuel for the hot water system at the premises and applicant proposes. To use fossil fuel for such systems, then the system shall utilize natural gas.
Okay. I thought that's a standard requirement, okay.
The natural gas part is um, not, is very specific to the ES, the rest is all standard, yes.
Okay.
That's it.
That's the um, that's the added condition, thank you.
Thanks.
With that motion to approve. Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shabeta?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashada?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Commissioner Attley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Ashada?
Aye.
Commissioner Yu?
Aye.
Application has been granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes the public hearing for April eighth, twenty twenty-five, thank you one and all.